It's six o'clock, the council meeting in order. John, would you deliver the indication?
Good Lord, thank for all the blessings you perceive on the city. Please be with our employees, help keep them safe. Bless our troops overseas and help the council and the mayor. Decisions that would be of interest and help the city in your name and prayer.
And if you know where the flag is, you want to lead us. You run it then.
Flag's allegiance to the body. United States of America. In the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought we got the point outside.
I believe Mr. Wilson was wrong. He didn't bring the flag. The school was good enough to put one, at least on the boat over there, but I did not bring the flag.
Council has a copy of the agenda, would entertain a motion. Jim, are there any changes or anything?
Yeah, I'd like to ask that we add an item concerning long-term watershed monitoring.
That'd be new business, wouldn't it?
It'd be new business, and put Mr. Hall's name on that one if you would.
Okay, let's do that. JK, let me be the last on the list, he'll watch the whole show. See, I'm making a big arrow here, K there. Watershed.
Long-term watershed monitoring.
Council, long-term watershed monitoring will be item K. Mr. Hall and Mr. Looney will be making that presentation. Anything else? Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition? So, a motion, a motion second, discussion. Being on all favor, everybody show a hand. Thank you, council, that looked you down. That'd be said that Ann Snavy is not with us this evening. I have not heard why, and Jim, do you have any idea?
Yeah, she sent out a message, she couldn't be here this evening.
Just couldn't be here. Sounds good to me. Item five, read minutes of the October 1st, 2018 regular meeting. And you can follow that up with the October 31st call meeting. Lisa?
Monday, October 1st, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order prompt at 6:00 PM. He requested John Fouska's indication. He requested council member Sonny Proctor lead in the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Jim Looney, who stated that he would like to remove items A and B under new business and add an item to the agenda regarding the EPD groundwater withdrawal permit increase. Mayor Weaver stated that he would like to keep items A and B on the agenda and explain why these items should be tabled and add to the agenda the EPD groundwater increase as item J under new business. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to approve the agenda with a change. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Hall read the minutes of the September 5th, 2018 regular meeting. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Ms. Hall read the minutes of the September 26th, 2018 town hall meeting. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield asked that there be a change made to clarify his statement that he felt that our public safety was lacking, to read that he felt that our public safety equipment was lacking. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made the motion to adopt the minutes with the change. Councilmember John Fouska seconded the motion. Motion carried by four votes, with Tony Fountain abstaining as he was absent from the September 26th meeting. Item Mayor under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Looney to give an update on the city sanitation service. Mr. Looney stated that he was exploring different options, including evaluating rates and also ways to grow the business. No action taken. Item B under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to perform the second reading of the additions to the city's pet ordinance. Following the second reading, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the ordinance additions. Councilmember John Fouska made a motion to approve the second reading. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C under old business, Mayor Weaver called the Finance Director Lisa Hall to present the 2018 tax mileage rate as advertised and as considered in the upcoming budget. She recommended to council that the mileage rate remain at 4.655 mils for the upcoming 2018 tax billing. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to adopt the mileage rate at 4.655 mils. Councilmember Ann Snavy made such motion, and Councilmember John Fouska seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Items A and B under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to discuss the two recent planned unit developments recommended by the Planning Commission. Mr. Looney stated that it had come to the city's attention that according to the city's code, the council cannot approve a PUD unless the parcel is owned as RA, residential agricultural. Parcel 053D 079002 of 79.76 acres owned by Onyx Investment Services LLC and Gateway to the Mountains LLC, and parcel 042012001 of 68.22 acres owned by MSMD LLC, which were recommended by the Planning Commission to be PUDs, must have the zoning of the parcels changed from C2 to RA prior to approving them as PUDs. He stated that another meeting by the Planning Commission must be held to recommend changing the zoning before the recommendation can be made for the PUDs. Item C under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney, who recognized Ms. Dale Morrissey from Reinhardt University, to ask permission from council to set up their St. Patrick's Day fundraiser event held on March 16th, either in the city's green space or possibly use North Main and downtown Jasper. She stated the event would be held from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve Ms. Morrissey's request to use the downtown area on March 16th, 2019 from 5:00 PM till 8:00 PM. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to approve such request. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Looney to present for council's approval the purchase of a pursuit pickup truck for the police department. Mr. Looney stated that this item was budgeted for 2018. A quote from Ronnie Thompson Ford and Mountain Communications Incorporated was presented in the amounts of $33,452 and $5,545 respectively. Mr. Looney stated that this was the lowest quote. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Fouska made a motion to approve the purchase. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item E under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present the council request from the Historical Society for the city to participate in replacing windows or repairing steps and cutting trees and shrubs at the old jail on North Main Street. Mr. Looney stated that the total dollar amount for the windows and step repairs would be $4,125. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to allow the city manager to work with the society in providing in-kind assistance using city employees to perform the tree shrub removal at this time. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item F under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney, who stated that he had a request from Carlo Del Pizzo to ask council to consider lowering the license fee for liquor by the drink. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Del Pizzo to explain his theory that if the license fee were cut in half, then there are six more restaurants in town that might possibly buy a license so the city would not lose revenue from the licenses and additionally would collect excise tax on the drink sold. Councilmember Sonny Proctor stated that he would like to hear from the other potential businesses that are interested in purchasing the license. No action was taken on this matter. Mr. Del Pizzo also stated that the closing North Main Street for the car shows on Saturday was hurting his business. Mayor Weaver appointed council members Kurt Ratfield and Tony Fountain to form a committee to work with Mr. Del Pizzo and the car club to come up with a recommendation for council. Item G under new business, Mayor Weaver called the Finance Director Lisa Hall to present the recommended homestead exemptions for the city's 2018 property taxes. She recommended to council that the city continue to offer a $3,000 homestead exemption and a $4,000 homestead exemption for citizens 65 and older. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to continue the homestead exemptions as recommended. Councilmember John Fouska made such motion, and Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item H under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present the additional cost to the city for the decorative mast arms for traffic lights. Mr. Looney presented a quote from World Fiber Technologies for $52,244.33. He stated this could be paid for out of squashed funds. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to purchase the decorative arms. Councilmember John Fouska seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item I under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present to council a request by one of the business owners in the area to create a four-way stop at the intersection of Confederate Old Philadelphia and Philadelphia Lane. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Fouska made a motion to approve the four-way intersection at Confederate Old Philadelphia and Philadelphia Lane with the addition of rumble strips. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item J under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney and David Hall to present a groundwater permit increase from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division. Mr. Hall stated that due to our leak detection efforts as well as hiring an outside firm to do leak detection on our water system, we received an increase from 1.0 million gallons per day to 1.33 million gallons per day. Mayor Weaver read the letter from the EPD and entertained a motion that council approve this permit increase. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made such motion. Councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Finance Director Lisa Hall gave the financial report for the month of September 2018. Lonnie Waters gave a report on roads, striping, and signs. Chief Greg Lobel gave a report of police activities for the month of September 2018. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of September 2018. Councilmember John Fouska gave a report on JYSA. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember John Fouska made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the special call meeting to be held October 31st, 2018.
Entertainer motion.
And Michael Washington, we accept the minutes as read.
Motion's approved, minutes as read.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Being on all favor, everybody show a hand. Thank you. October 31st, 2018, call in.
Call council meeting Wednesday, October 31st, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order prompt at 4:00 PM. He requested Jim Looney give the indication. He requested council member Tony Fountain lead the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember John Fouska made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously, with three votes for. Councilmembers Ann Snavy and Kurt Ratfield were absent from the meeting. There was no old business to discuss. Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Underwood, Director of Planning and Zoning, and Jim Looney, City Manager. Mr. Looney stated the purpose of this call meeting was to make a correction for the two recently requested planned unit developments. He stated that the council first needs to approve the zoning change from general commercials, C2, to residential agriculture, RA, for the developments. Then council can approve to allow the PUDs. Mayor Weaver explained the history behind the required zoning and why PUDs are only allowed under RA zoning. Item Mayor under new business, Mr. Looney presented for council's approval a request from JR McLaughlin, applicant, to request a change in zoning from C2 to RA be approved on parcel 053D 079002 of 79.76 acres owned by Onyx Investment Services LLC and Gateway to the Mountains LLC. Mr. Looney stated that the Planning Commission had met on October 30th and voted to recommend this change to council. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Fouska made a motion to approve the zoning change for parcel 053D 079002 from C2 to RA. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B under new business, Mr. Looney presented a request from JR McLaughlin, applicant, to request a PUD be approved on parcel 053D 079002 of 79.76 acres owned by Onyx Investment Services LLC and Gateway to the Mountains LLC. Mr. Looney stated that the commission had voted to recommend to the city that the PUD be approved. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion that the council approved the PUD concept. Councilmember John Fouska made such motion. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C under new business, Mr. Looney presented for council's approval a request from Neil Hughes, applicant, to request a change in zoning from C2 to RA be approved on parcel 042012001 of 68.22 acres owned by MSMD LLC. Mr. Looney stated that the Planning Commission had met on October 30th and had voted to recommend the change to council. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Hughes to give a presentation of his plans for the property. Following the presentation, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to approve the zoning change for parcel 042012001 from C2 to RA. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D under new business, Mr. Looney presented a request from Neil Hughes, applicant, to request a PUD be approved on parcel 042012001 of 68.22 acres owned by MSMD LLC. Mr. Looney stated that the commission had voted to recommend to the city that the PUD be approved. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion that the council approved the PUD concept. Councilmember John Fouska made such motion. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember John Fouska made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular meeting to be held November 5th, 2018.
Entertainer motion. So, motion to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Being on all favor, everybody show a hand. Kurt, you were not there.
That's right, yeah, sorry.
The three that were there, Fountain, Fouska, and Proctor, were the three votes in favor of. And they, let me know, and I think I made clear this, Ratfield, that, Ratfield, that you were having a war and couldn't be here. You apologize for your absence, I understand.
Did everybody get a copy of those minutes? I've got two, and I just wanted to make sure everyone had a copy.
Must have been the machine, I got two also.
Okay. Under old business, Jim, item A, update on city manager position.
The council has received the resumes from the applicants, there were 37, one of which had already pulled their resume at the time that was included in the package that you received. Last week, I think it was Thursday or Friday, I sent an email requesting that each of you in reviewing the applicants send an email to Dan Lassiter with Benson Institute ranking the candidates, top five candidates, one to five, with one being your top candidate. If you all don't have his, it'll be on, his email address will be on the email I sent you. So that shouldn't be a problem. That's due to Dan on the 9th. We will be asking for a call meeting for Thursday, November 15th at 6:00, when we will talk to Dan via telephone about the ratings that he received and select candidates for interview. Schedule interviews after that day.
Okay, that meeting, they're regularly called meeting, and you will probably want to go into closed session.
Certainly have to go into closed session.
Okay. Bill, you see an issue with that?
No.
Okay. What do you plan on that? But we will go through the process. Anything else?
Any questions?
Thank you, Jim. Item B, sanitation rate increase for consideration.
In your package, you've got a paper with proposed new rates for sanitation. We closed rates with increased residential service to $20 a month. Residential with senior discount, 18. Housing authority, 18. Commercial one-day service, 25. Commercial two-day service, 50. Four-day service, 100. Five-day service, 125. And restaurant, 150. I ask that council consider these changes and gives me an opportunity then to sit down with the housing authority and discuss the increase.
Have you met with them yet?
Have not. Wanted to have, wanted to have rates before I sat down with them.
So this is just for information tonight?
I'd like to, for council to consider approval of this.
Okay.
So that when I do sit down with the housing authority, that I've got an approved rate.
For the commercial, for downtown residents? Have they been aware of the rate increase?
No.
They don't.
No one, no one's been notified. Didn't want to notify anyone until we had a council vote.
Has the council had an opportunity to look at these numbers?
Sent them in an email to mayor and council some weeks ago now.
Do you have an update on, we discussed growth of the program?
My intent is to, once we get rates, we'll start a letter in with our water bill. Let people, one, know about the rate increases, and at the same time, people who are not sanitary service, trash, garbage customers, will see the rates and will request them to consider changing to our service. Same time, we'll look to have an article in the paper and do some advertising in the paper.
To be clear, that would be for sanitation, that advertisement would only be geared towards those within city limits, even if?
Yes, we, I, I don't.
We would have to advertise that clearly.
Yeah, I don't see us going outside the city limits. I would not suggest that.
Do you mind touching base on the efficiency side that we discussed?
I'm working on a plan that would cut back Saturday service to only servicing restaurants and commercial accounts that demand that we get it off the streets, sanitary reasons, odors, the whole thing. What that would mean is moving the housing authority from Saturday to another day of the week. And we'll look at the possibilities of that. I plan on having a plan together and presenting to council. We still have to communicate that to folks, they need to know what days we'll be picking up.
Entertainer motion.
I'd like to make a motion, if this is appropriate, for us to table this and allow you to go and speak to the housing authority on the proposed rate. Get a feel for that, and then come back to council and give us a better feel of how that will work out.
And if that's your desire, fine. I'm more comfortable going in with the rate that council has approved and maybe negotiating with a little bit more strength, having an approved rate. If necessary, if the housing authority cannot bear this increase, then I would come back to council in that situation and ask for a different rate.
Have you marketed this any way to the general public?
No, not yet.
So this, it'll be an increase, that'll be imposed upon them with the vote of council? No, with no input?
We're gonna advertise it, and we're not gonna surprise anyone with it.
It's not like a surprise, I think it's.
Well, we, we're gonna have to figure out a date to start it.
I like the idea of the table.
You got a motion to table, that takes precedent over any other motion.
Got a motion to table?
That's second.
Got a motion to second? Discussion. More discussion.
I think this'd better be discussed during the workshop, where we can have a little more time to get into it a little bit more in depth. I'd like to see us bring it back up for next workshop for next month.
Then is the desire that I not discuss it with the housing authority yet since we don't?
Still like to see the negotiation, that's part of what we need to discuss. How the negotiations go and what they think.
I agree with her.
I'd be glad to take this to them and start a discussion. If that's what's voted.
Your $18, that was per unit.
Yes.
I think it'd be a good idea to discuss that with Ms. Dobson and the board of the housing council. They may have a different, at least it's from input. You think on that, Tony?
Well, that's why I asked if the downtown merchants had been aware of this before we possibly vote, don't mind past it, before they didn't get blindsided by that. That's why I asked that question.
Any other discussion?
Is this something, if I may have a clarification, is this something you would want discussed with commercial folks?
Well, I don't want, I don't want.
We had a public hearing where everyone came in wanting to save the garbage. And I think possibly what the council was saying, they probably want a chance to let the people know how that's gonna be saved, instead of just raising the rates on them. So usually when we raise rates or raise taxes, we give a little more notifications since we are a government. So I think that's where the council is coming from.
Well, and the reason I asked that is if you were gonna go back to the housing authority.
He's not a man of the house anymore.
Yeah, well, I'm saying if he goes back to Ms. Dobson and gives her the quotes, I kind of feel like other people that's gonna be involved needs to kind of know what your rates might be going to.
So would the article in the paper about tonight's meeting satisfy your communication with commercial folks?
I'd be comfortable with that.
And ask for any input to city hall, maybe give you a call with complaints, concerns for, that you might bring to the council the next time, and that they could come to the council meeting and voice their opinion.
And even if they were real happy with it, they could call.
Jim, I think this was a good attempt for the first time of a strategic planning process, where we do an introspective review of a department of the city. And I think ideally, we would come forth with some sort of plan with measurable results and go back and see if our plan was meeting those goals and showing, demonstrated that we were getting the results we wanted. So I think, I'd like to see it, rather than kind of fragmented by rates here and efficiency here, I know that's delaying the process, but I think ultimately a plan moving forward that we could present to, not just the commercial people, but the public and the housing authority. And as much collaboration as we can have between those entities during the process, which you're able to do much more so than we are, I think that would be an admirable feat. Appreciate the work you've done so far, and I was about.
I think at a workshop, that those goals could be discussed and approved. It's a goal, I don't think it would take a vote.
Okay, hey, sorry. Any other discussion? Being on all favor, table this to the next meeting. Thank you.
And at the same time, I will discuss this with the housing authority.
Pouring license liquor by the drink. Mr. Looney, that was brought up at the last meeting when Mr. Del Pizio, if I pronounced that properly.
Del Pizio, I believe.
Del Pizio, I'm trying to pronounce that properly for the future, for the clerk.
There's no, there's no I at the end.
There's not? Well, then we're gonna pronounce it your way. With that being said, it was brought up at the last meeting when he attended, and he mentioned the liquor by the drink, trying to come up with a formula that we could get more people to purchase license. Where are we?
Again, there's, council should have an email on this dated October 17th. But I called 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 businesses that currently have beer and wine.
Restaurants.
Restaurants that don't have liquor. There were three businesses interested. One, two, three, four, five not interested, and two no responses from multiple calls, which I'm assuming is not interested. So there's an opportunity for three additional businesses, one very, two very interested in one kind of.
Does the county council aware which businesses that is through?
It was in the email, but if you want, I can read it.
I don't think they would care that they would mention.
Those that were interested were Woodbridge Inn, Lingology, and Johnny's New York Style Pizza. Not interested 61 Main, Ableia, and Fifteen Garden, BBQ, and Pizza Hut, and I did not hear a response. BBQ, Pizza Hut, and I did not hear a response from Last Catch or Buffalo Rooks.
Last Catch was, showed interest, no? Somebody said, never mind. Council, open for discussion with city manager? Explain to the council what the prices are presently.
The additional cost for liquor, I believe it's $950 on top of the beer and wine, is that correct?
Three thousand.
Two thousand?
Three thousand.
Three thousand. The additional cost is three? Three thousand per year.
They wanna cut that down to fifteen hundred?
And the request from Mr. DePizio or...
DePizio.
DePizio. Was to consider lowering that by half.
So on top of beer and wine, it's three thousand additional, so?
Yes.
Okay.
County is the same.
County's the same.
Costs sixty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to buy a county license to have all three. Now, I say sixty-two, I meant forty-six.
Forty-six.
And city and county? City and county both signed?
No, no, no. Sorry.
We're already in chief for nothing besides that.
Where's our total control group? Where's our total for the whole package?
Three thousand plus, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Thirty. Those from our readers pay thirty-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars for their total license.
Thank you.
Tony, you got a second on this?
I was just sitting here looking at the ones that was interested, not interested, and no response. Just seemed like there was not very much interest in it for us to go through the process to lower the fees. I mean, that's just my opinion.
And Bill might help me with some recollection of this from when we originally passed the liquor ordinance to allow still spirits by the drink at the restaurants. It wasn't that we were trying to encourage drinking. So we weren't gonna make it as inexpensive and we actually added a little extra, I think, punishment fee, for lack of a better term, for wanting to sell the still spirits. So you have to really have your business. Because they want everybody who could sell alcohol, be selling alcohol, you had to be serious about it at times, which I had to have some reflection to remember what our thought process was when we... It just wasn't gonna be easy to get a liquor license. Anybody give them a 1500 dollars. Pardon?
Kinda worked off the county's fees too.
Well, county didn't have it at that time.
County didn't have it at that time.
And we came up with ours.
Well, they did have it at that time, but only one place. Good connect.
Well, that, we'll argue about this later. We, it was something we started years ago, hoping that we would bring the restaurant business to 515. And it still kept over us somewhat. But that being said, Tony, would you like to make a statement to back up your original as to how you feel and what made a motion to move forth? Or anyone else could as well?
Yeah, that's just, that's just the way I feel. I want to have the rest of the council put in to help.
Well, if you make a motion, they'll make a decision to back you or not.
Well, with a little more interest is being shared, I make a motion that we leave the, we leave the fees as it is right now?
Got a motion to leave fees as is presently? Got a motion to second? Discussion?
I remember right when he came to the meeting, he said we needed at least five more to make it, because it's gonna be beneficial. And we only got three, so...
Anything else? Be it no other discussion, all favor but by show of hands? That's your name, it remains the same. We can notify Mr. DePizio. DePizio, he'll... Thank you. And since we're on that item, we discussed the car show while he was there. Has the council committee had an opportunity to put any thought process or maybe got together since that time to discuss our future with the car show?
We've had some communication. It's Kirk, Kirk went to, he got in touch with some folks uptown. I would like to get in touch with some of the guys that shows the cars. And my only thought process was if they really wanted to close Main Street when they had their car show, is to close the north end of town up toward 61 Main, that short section instead of the long section. Now, that was just, that was just my idea. If they really truly wanted the street closed down right over there.
You're talking about with the north toward the main street?
Yeah, toward 61 Main end, yeah.
That's just something that I come up with now. I don't know why, I had to go to the folks.
Sixty-one Main, you mean, you mean...
Or the south.
See, you're talking about south.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
But that is the address for 61 Main. That is a true Main Street address. What'd you hear, Kirk?
The overall consensus speaking to business owners and those that work on Main Street is the car show has no positive impact for business when they close Main Street. And a couple of folks actually questioned, why are we closing Main Street for the little amount of cars or attendees? And I had a couple of business owners say it's a negative impact.
Okay. Could you, when's the next car show? It should be at the end.
I guess, yeah.
We're done this year? So we have time to plan and contact the people who put on the car show? Is that what you just said? Would you agree, because you get a chance, opportunity to go speak? And of course, the people who have the car show get to watch this council meeting and see, and come to us and speak to us and explain why they felt it might be an opportunity for us versus an issue that is not an opportunity. So with that, county committee, I appreciate it. And if we could, we'll, I'll have you on the agenda for some report next month till we get some satisfaction. If you will at least add that to the old business where we dropped off the pouring license. Jim, item D, the blight ordinance update. Bill, pick it.
I laid out everybody up in that I could finally draft it. I think you want a blight ordinance, that's a better ordinance. I think you all read it, digested. And then if you got any questions about it, we'll decide.
Okay. Well, let's make the note tonight that the blight ordinance update has been issued to the council as a whole. And they'll look over it and we will bring it back before the council for maybe a reading next month. John, good counsel? Okay. Been no action? Item E, Jim, Bill still behind old business, Lisa. Item E, 125 North Main Street Purchase Update?
Been no action on the purchase of this property. I have had discussion with chairman of the Downtown Development Authority. He has concerns about the price. Has not had any action to move forward with it. I would request that council direct the city manager and county, city attorney to work with the DDA to resolve the loan application for the purchase of 125 Main Street. Some...
Motion?
Motion.
To have the city manager and the city attorney work with the Downtown Development Authority to bring to resolution the purchase of the property. Is that what you just said?
I said resolve loan, to resolve loan application. To get a loan application filed and move on. And anyone else that you would want to assign to that would be fine with me.
Let me, let me give you... What you need to do is call a meeting. Have Tera get in touch with the members of the board, say next week, week after, next week, next Wednesday, 1 o'clock, City Hall. All the DDA members meet at the City Hall for the subject, for the discussion of the purchase of 125 North Main Street. And with that, you'll be able to come to the council with a resolution.
And we know already at an open meeting that the council voted unanimously on and the Development Authority also voted unanimously on.
Yes, they already voted on it.
Then what's the purpose of another open meeting?
Oh, okay. What's happening?
Downtown Development Authority's not making the application. They have not moved on it.
I suggest that you make, you pursue the application, have everything ready for them and bring it in and then they will vote, they will sign everything that you presented to them.
Can the city make an application in the name of the DDA?
You have everything for them and then they come in and they sign all the documents with Mr. Vicki present. Where we purchased everything else we've ever bought.
If that's council's request, I can do that.
Bill, have you had any conversation with Mike about this?
I have, today, in fact. He doesn't believe that he has the authority to go negotiate along. That was always done by the city manager previously.
Well, that's, that's good negotiating. We have a term of...
He says he don't know how much it is or how much interest rate is or anything.
Jim?
Just wait until Mike...
Get all the documents ready for him. We have a meeting. He signed, we sign it and we can move forward. Or we don't have to have the meetings, if we've had the meeting. Mr. Dentson, I'm sure, will sign the documentation for it for the city attorney.
He just needs, he wants to know...
But he, he don't go to bank.
He don't have the authority to borrow his money because he has no way to pay it back. Little heavy.
I gave him terms of rate, but we will go back to the bank and ask them to repair the paperwork for him to sign.
Okay. Old business, 125 North Main Street next month. New business, Christmas parade, December 1st. Jim?
I have a request from Downtown Merchants Association to have their Christmas parade on December 1st. I think it's included in their package. Original request was to close all of Main Street at 4 o'clock until after the parade. After discussing that with her, we're not gonna close the 53 and Main Street until the parade starts at 6 o'clock. They are refined with that and are requesting that they're able to have their parade and such.
What's their times again?
Main Street will be closed starting at 4 o'clock for festivities and then...
At North Main Street only?
North Main Street. And then 53 and South Main Street closed at the start of the parade at 6 o'clock until after the parade, then everything opens up.
Any issues with that? Chief?
I get the permit.
That is the 1st of December, you know?
Yes, I get the permit from DOT, but I'll always sign all of it.
Okay. Senator Tanan, motion to approve the Christmas parade? Got a motion?
Sorry?
Got a motion to second? Discussion? Ben, on all favor, but by show of hand? Item B, Christmas tour of homes on Main Street, December 2nd. Aces? Jim?
Included in your package is a request from Glory Shaw concerning aces. You promote doing a tour of homes on South Main Street this Sunday, December 2nd. They don't have any tour from 1 until 5:30. They will be using golf carts on the side streets and request the green space to be reserved for them. I've checked and the green space is available.
Motion? Got a motion to approve? Motion to second? Discussion? Ben, on all favor, but by show of hand? Thank you, council. Item C, fire engine capital lease IRS form 8038-G. Jim?
Got the request from the seller of the fire truck for us to sign a form, it's IRS form. They have prepared, they have numbers on there. We can't prove the numbers. The number is $10,000 above, $1,700 above what we show on our amortization schedule. Discussed this with some accounting type friends who tell me that what they are doing is adding additional costs of them getting the loan to this form. They're not disclosed to us, so we don't have any way of verifying it. They are signing this form as a preparer and then we sign it as the borrower. Their suggestion was, since they're signing as preparer, that they have the liability, the city doesn't. Lisa and I, being bean counters, get very antsy about verifying numbers that we can't, can't see. So in discussions, I think John, you had suggested we bring it to council and give it, I don't know if you wanted it as action or as information.
I don't plan to be a bean counter, but my signature was one of those go home, and I refuse to sign. So that's why we're here. And I wanted to make sure Mr. Oka and everyone else in the council would know that there's a $10,000-some-on additional charge to our fire agent. When you talk about $650,000 plus, that $10,000 don't seem like much, but...
No, this additional $10,000 is money they're paying out of their proceeds. We've, it's included in our amortization, but it's included in the cost of the vehicle, so it's...
It didn't look like it to me. Isn't that the way you saw that?
I couldn't find the $10,000, never could.
We, we could never see that money because it's like any profit they have on the vehicle, it's on our amortization schedule. All the profit and all the costs are on our amortization schedule, but we can't tell what is profit, what's lost and loss and what is...
Is this the manufacturer or the...
Manufacturer.
It's the manufacturer?
If I'm not mistaken, this is simply like buying a racing vehicle. You don't know what's profit for the dealership versus commission for the salesman. It's the same breakdown, you don't see...
Commission for the salesman would be a, a, a great example of it. It's included in our amortization and it's money they spend, but they're saying this is loan cost of them getting this loan set up. Lisa?
I don't see it in the amortization. That's my problem. Because I'm going by what our principal is on amortization and that's what we paid for the trucks, $568,923. I don't see that. I don't, I don't understand it. And I couldn't, that's why I couldn't explain it to the mayor.
That $10,000 is included in the principal. That's, that, that principal is cost of the vehicle, cost of them manufacturing it, profit and loan costs, cost of them getting this, this loan set up.
But this column called principal on my amortization schedule adds up to $568,923, not the $579,652 that they put on that form. That's why I'm confused about it.
And I fully understand the confusion. I'm not, as I said before, I don't have a, I can't see that $10,780 something.
And we both talked to this guy and they can't provide a schedule showing me that, what that $10,000 is made up of. And this is our form. This is, this, we're signing this form.
Could you speak with our, who I'm worried about when they look at this and I sign this document, there's our... Could you speak with our, who I'm worried about when they look at this and outside of this document, there's our audit. Could you call our auditors tomorrow and have them get involved to see if they could bring some clarity to this?
Yeah, I'll call them, but they're gonna be needing the same thing I'm gonna be. They won't understand it either.
Well, they're gonna audit us later and I'd like for them to see that.
Then I, yeah, I'll call them tomorrow.
So what is this form? What's the name of it?
It's 8038G. I put it in there.
What's the title of it now, is it?
It's to report, the way I explained it to me because it's like you're issuing tax exempt bonds, but we're not. But since we're getting a tax exempt loan for this fire engine, we are required to file this form.
It's information returned for tax exempt government forms is the name of it.
And we've signed them before, but I've always understood the number.
You've been able to understand the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, let's get an understanding of the numbers and council, if I could, ask the council to make a motion to allow the city manager to move forward with this when they're satisfied with the numbers and report back to the council next month. Because this, I think they're the timeframe on this, is there not?
It's got to be filed on November 15.
Okay, so if we're satisfied with November 15, then I'd like to be satisfied and Jim might be satisfied with that. If council would trust us to be satisfied, we can speak to Mr. Pickett. But we've got to move and there's no reason to call from meeting to approve this when you can allow administration to move forward with it.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, we entertain a motion to move forward with the signing of the document by myself, actually the city manager and the city finance director and our auditors have given us a full understanding as to that this is not an additional cost. Oh, that's what will be, my pleasure. Was that a motion that somebody made? Did I get somebody to make that motion?
Someone.
Second, and a motion to second, that's basically to let the administration move forward with the signing of the document when we feel satisfied that everything is correct. Got a motion to second, any further discussion? Being on all favorable by show of hand? Thank you, council. All right, I'm the Georgia DOT project update.
Council, including in your package is a letter from Georgia Department of Transportation. This is concerning our quote big project. They are giving all property owners in the work area notice that they will be having a study done for ecological, archaeology, archaeological and historical resources in the area. So they will be coming on to properties and doing some digging and some research. And they're asking that property owners be patient with them being on the property.
And, but from, I think the last report from yourself and Mr. Waters that this has been moved back?
We're looking at 2021, I believe now.
I don't, not that it's 24, but I think 21. Okay, it's always four years out there. Okay.
But they feel like they need to do the study?
Well, this, no, this is one of the processes, process that they needed to attend and this is a good move or step forward.
That's just for information, doesn't mean any of that.
Have the owners already been notified?
Yes, we've all received, all the owners have received this same letter.
Anything else with DOT?
No.
Any update on the traffic lights?
Order was made, verified. They're holding to a 22-week lead time on it.
They're restarting the big project for the mask arms.
Possible.
All right, the four-way stop sign?
PM has been issued. The city has issued a PM to the.
For the four-way stops? For the, I mean for the mask arms?
Mask arms.
Okay, for the four-way stop sign on Philadelphia?
We're getting together supplies for that. Big holdup has been the rumble strips. As soon as they come in, we'll install everything, immediately cover it with black plastic and put a sign up telling folks that this will become a four-way stop on whatever date that will be. Plan on doing that for five days and then opening it up.
Yes, the people who are familiar with it, they'll make the mistake. But it's definitely, I went through there today. Okay.
Are the last thing we get?
One more question about DOT. The study they were performing in front of Burberry in reference to that ditch and that wash, do we have any update on that?
It is included in the mask arm project and we expect it to be done with that one.
Definitely with 2021, but. Okay, item E, vacation policy change?
Counsel? This is, a situation that has come to my attention. Many employees are, generally employees are scheduled to work 2,080 hours, 52 weeks, 40 hours a week. And vacation is awarded on the year's service and 40 hours per week. For the employees such as police and water plant operators, they actually work about 42 hours a week. They're scheduled 2,184 hours and firefighters, 2,928 hours. You divide that by the number of weeks in the year and it comes up to 42 hours per week for police officers, the water plant operators and 56 hours for firefighters. So what happens is they work 20, firefighter, for example, works a 24-hour shift. If they're trying to get a full week off, they're using, 40 hours does not cover their time they're off. And what I'm requesting is that we increase the vacation accrual for firefighters to 56 hours per week, or week vacation earned, 42 hours for police officers and 42 hours for water plant operators.
So the firemen, when they take a week's vacation, will make less than they would on a regular week's pay? They get a regular week's pay?
Right, get a regular week's pay. Currently for a firefighter to take a week's vacation, he has to take 48 hours off from work. But he only has 40, so he has to use a week and more time. Because his time is accrued on 40 hours a week, but it's a 48 hour on a short week to take off. Same thing with sick time. If I have a fireman, he's out 24 hours, but his sick time's accrued on eight hours. Police department, a 12-hour department, so is the water plant. So if they're out sick, they had eight hours of sick time built, but they're out 12. My department's typically worth more hours than their 24 versus 12.
Have you checked with any other fire departments and you got any feedback?
They run the gambit, Johnny. There are some that combine sick leave and vacation into one pool and allow them to take it. I'm not real, I'm not real keen on suggesting that. I think sick leave needs to be for sick leave.
But you're running the same problem with sickness if they're out sick, but you still want it upside down with your hours.
Yeah.
This will be just adjustment for vacation, this will be vacation and sick time?
I'm just asking for vacation.
Where did this idea come from? May I go shoot? Where did this idea come from, Roper?
He in the place, too.
Wow, I wouldn't involve him in that meeting. Okay.
So is this gonna cost the city more money? Lisa, you know?
This is about the first time I've seen this.
I think, I think, I think we need a chance to look at this.
Well, the cost, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's any cost associated. If someone is taking leave, you're stacking it with someone else.
Stacking it with current employees.
With current employees.
There's a cost in the city.
Well, we'll have to. We'll have to accrue more vacation though what you're in.
Yes, you're having to accrue more vacation.
Which will hit the books.
Well, they're getting a week, they're getting a full seven days. I gotta understand this. Not totally. I think it's understandable, but I'm there where you guys are for and I'd like to look at it closely. Let you, at least a minute, let me understand it.
So we have a maximum on the vacation we can approve anyway, correct? Employees?
No.
After 15 years.
Doesn't depend on how many years' service you have, we don't have a, we don't have a maximum loan, depending on how many years you have?
After 15 years, you get your full week, but I don't know if there's a cap on there or not. Is that what you're asking, is there a cap?
Right, some of them that you accrue per year.
After 15 years, that's four weeks and I don't think it increases anymore after that.
But those four weeks in order for your guys to take it, that's truly not eligible time?
For a 24-hour employee, boy.
Correct, it is.
For an eight-hour employee like me, yes.
It's important for us to honor the employees that are working, you know, hour for hour across the board and these.
That's my concern, it's not comparable. Think about firefighter taking eight day off, that's actually three vacation days, 24 hours.
There's nothing we couldn't look at next month and make a decision on. I'd like to, I think I'm calculating this, but I'd like to, for the council to have an opportunity to look over it for a month and make a decision after a little bit of thought. When they turn the motion to table it, somebody would do it. Unless you gotta tell them a good grasp of it.
Jim, what's your feeling on this plan? Is it a solid plan?
Yeah, you know, I wish I could become a believer in combining, city awards, combines annual leave and sick leave.
PTO.
It's just PTO.
PTO, but I don't have a good feel about that, so I'm not ready to recommend it. I'm more comfortable with this.
Well, our finance director, Lisa, I feel like you have some, you have some questions about this as well, do you?
Yeah, I would like to look at it more. I don't really understand it right now. I just saw it.
I personally would like to see the employees be treated fairly and I think that's what we're probably all about. I think that's why we're here, I think that's why it's brought up. I personally would like to see them be treated fairly by all accounts. If there's some confusion here, if everybody would be comfortable with it tabled until next month, that would be my suggestion. I'd like a motion to be tabled until next month still.
Got a motion to table? Failed for lack of a second.
And you couldn't find another city that had a comparable plan or something?
I have got a number of plans from a number of cities. This is the one that I'm recommending. We can discuss the others and maybe a good workshop topic if council sees clear.
Jim, David raised a hand. David?
All you're doing is making your shift workers whole. They're not whole right now because they work more hours, they work odd hours, they work holidays. A lot of eight-hour shift people don't. So on top of that, you're not getting them the same availability to have dates off as your eight-hour shift workers. So that's all you're doing is making your shift workers whole.
I follow you there. I've just been here 27 years and have had meeting after meeting with these gentlemen back there and think that may be the first time that I've been hit with this one. I've been hit with a lot of different ideas, but I'd like to get a little discussion going on before what I was asking for to get an understanding of. In fact, I've been by your office many a times and we've never discussed it.
No, I mean, I didn't, I didn't know what kind of a deal I was saying, but I mean, that's all this would do is just your shift workers.
But there's also, there's also, if I recall, when I set, you set up the program where 12-hour shifts, there was some advantage of it. Remember when I asked you to start working a regular 40-hour shift, you wouldn't be excited about it. You'd like the 12 hours on, 40, seven days on, seven days off.
A lot of people do, but then a lot of people don't. You know, a lot of people, you're missing a holiday for your family, you're on night shift, you're here when the other people are not here. You're working a lot of the hours, a lot of the other city employees refuse to work.
Does the motion still want to? It actually failed for lack of a second, but I think we can start again.
What does the county have in place?
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, I did not bring it. I think we do have the county's program, but I don't have that with me right now.
I know the county approves time differently than we do, but I don't have the numbers. But I do know it's different hours.
I fully support this measure. I'm willing to make a motion to table this until we get clarification and the council's provided further details with other plans and maybe we can move this in a workshop.
Got a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
If we need to meet the personnel committee, you know, pull it together as well with Lisa present, I'm glad to. I think that'd be not a bad idea. I think the purposes of the plan are great, I think it's the numbers that we need a little clarity on. But not saying we wouldn't do it, we just like to see what you think, like I would.
I fully support it, I just want clarification.
Any further discussion? Being on all favorable by show of hand? Thank you, council.
I'll have this available for the next workshop.
Good motion, Tom. Burton Street property easement, Mr. Pickett?
The housing authorities have been doing some surveying on their property on Burton Street and discovered that we have a sewer line on their property that they haven't given us, that we don't own an easement to, even though it's been there for years. Mrs. Obson asks that, that she wants to make sure that you still work and will keep the sewer line operating and they're gonna give us an easement.
Well, that's good because if I'm familiar with that particular sewer system, sewer line, it was put there for the McIntyre Place and Burton Street, otherwise sewer wouldn't be in that area at all to begin with. So, yeah, we'd be happy to take that easement and be happy to maintain it, I believe, would that be correct, council?
I would think so.
So who's gonna draw up the?
I am.
Okay. So we'll just move forward, is this advice or we don't need any motion on this until we accept the easement? Okay, it's just in form of the council?
That's what it was meant to tonight.
Thank you, Bill. She wouldn't want to lose that sewer system, that's what runs through the chamber.
It's at the head of the old Dougie Allen Pond.
Yes. And I've not heard from Ann lately, has she talked about any construction project going on?
Nothing, I've been maybe aware of.
She mentioned to me sometime back, they're gonna be adding units at Burton Street. Maybe what this is all about. She might be giving, when you see her with the other issues, she'll talk to you about that.
It's frankly big. And both of those apartments.
I think this.
It's a, uh, with the sewer.
We took, we took it up once with Roots and, didn't we, years ago? Okay. Uh, item G, storm drainage at fifty-three and Jones Street?
Council may remember, uh.
Put, put picket for it, old business, Lisa.
You may remember some months ago, we discussed storm water issues at Jacob's Point, um. Fifty-three and Jones Street and also Elizabeth Street. And council approved a, an amount of money, uh, to do some engineering, work on these. The only one that I have been able to satisfy right now, satisfied is relative, but uh, it's gonna be the Property Owners Association. That's gonna be doing the work at Jacob's Point. But uh, we did make some improvements to a intake up by Mosley Heights. Uh, and we spent nearly nineteen hundred dollars on uh, doing some camera work to determine there was a manhole halfway down the hill. I can't remember how much we approved, but to continue on to Jones and fifty-three. Um, I've got a proposal to do fifty-three hundred dollars, five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars of TV work. To determine any obstructions in the drainage system, size the, the system, determine if junction boxes are needed and, and slope. And determine if there's any leaks, requesting fifty-three hundred, fifty dollars to continue that. This, uh, this is not a, an addition to what you all approved before. Uh, I'm saying I'm, I'm closing out that approval with the nineteen hundred dollars that we've already spent and requesting this money to work on, on this project.
Now, this is the, Jones Street, this is the storm water that goes across the Speedburger property, down behind uh. Richard Street, Richard Street? Yeah, Richard Street.
It's supposed to be.
Costs with Richard and drains into Shark Mountain Creek, what's the name of that creek? Pokey, what is the name of that creek, David? That feeds the water, wastewater treatment plant?
Pokey.
Pokey, okay. Nelson ends up all the way down the racetrack. Uh, but what you're gonna find is uh, the drainage pipe for the uh. Fifty-three, probably built with uh, CCC workers back in the forties. Uh, it's, it's small. And then bad part, about to get smaller than that when it goes under the Speedburger. And so, you probably think of the Speedburger parking lot, is why we've never moved forward with that.
And we're, we're hoping, we've been talking to property owners, both the, on Speedburger's side and opposite side of the fifty-three. About putting a pond in to sort of slough it out, yeah. So thi- this is part of what will become a larger project.
So you're gonna, you're gonna camera it?
Yes, you can.
Who's gonna do that for you?
Ben Trail. You've got a quote in your.
I think I saw it in the email somewhere. Uh, with entertaining motion, council. Little move. Got a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. David?
I thought that was the one you could walk through.
Pardon?
I thought that was the one you could walk through.
At, at fifty-three?
Yeah.
Don't think so.
When I was like on the water line, I'm not sure, right?
Yeah. And guess what, it goes under, it goes under to get smaller and then it really gets small when they tie it into it when they go to Speedburger.
We fixed that water line not long ago.
Take a look at it tomorrow and give me a call, I'm curious, I don't think you can walk through it.
This water line goes through there too.
Water line, you can't walk through it. I wouldn't want him to go in.
Yeah, we don't have no idea, we'll have to get that water up either.
Uh, okay. Got a good project.
I'll, what, what would be able to answer your question if this is approved, whether we can walk through it or not?
Well, I was told by the person that put it in, but the line was smaller when I got on the Speedburger side. Uh, item H. You're voting in? No, I'll vote a vote by your hand. You down? Uh, item H, alcohol license request for continuance, Peking Garden, Mr. Underwood.
This is for Mr. Frank Zane who has bought the Peking Garden and he was late getting his application back to us. So we didn't get to act on it very quickly, but uh, this is his first, uh, for a council. He, he can't get his license until next month.
So this is, then a motion to continue?
Yeah, he's, he's got his sign, his sign up and he's, he's gone through all of that, but now he just, he has to wait for the time.
Council is expecting another fine, neither moving forwards, we always do it with a motion to continue, there's been a motion.
So what?
Motion to continue. The motion is second. Discussion. Been done off, a vote by your hand?
Thank you, council.
Alcohol license renewal for two thousand nineteen. Mr. Underwood?
We've started our alcohol renewal two thousand nineteen. We have seventeen people who have paid their renewal fees so far and uh. They've, they've gotten, they've got until the meeting next month to get them paid or. After that, if they don't have it paid by the council meeting in December, then they will. Council meeting in December will be on the third. And if they don't have it paid by then, we won't have another council meeting until January. So anybody that doesn't have it paid by then will be, they won't be able to sell alcohol or uh, their license is good till the thirty-first of December.
That's happened a few times to people who were derelict in their duty, I guess.
Normally every time you all do a special meeting and give it to them, last year you did not.
Yeah, we've done it once or twice, but not many. I think we had another reason to have that meeting as well. We don't have many, we have two meetings in December for any reason?
I think so.
I think, okay. We have, we seem like back in the days when there was a different budget here. But anyway, that being said, so we have nothing to approve denying, just a notification to council.
I have seventeen that have come through, if they want to approve the seventeen.
Uh, well, we don't have anything else to do.
Aviaged cuisine. Dos Margaritas, Dunn Food, Bats Cafe, Engels, Jasper BP on Church Street. Jasper Convenience LLC, Johnny's New York Pizza, Main Stock Market, Pueblo Cantina. Racetrack Petroleum, Loco's Pub. Jasper Beverage. Tazar Food Mart, BP on West Church Street. Teter Patch Players, The Last Catch, Trout's One and Two, Walmart. I Love New York Pizza, they have all paid and will be approved.
Or there are some, some, two or three of those are just, just still spirits by the drink and it says a mixture of what you just got approved.
Dos Margaritas has by the drink and Trout Beverage One and Two, both have. Some of these have beverage by the drink with selling alcohol, selling beer and wine by the package and some of it is beer and wine by the drink.
Right, you get that. You're interested, council, he can give you a list of whatever you might be looking for. With entertaining motion to approve the application that is submitted by Mr. Underwood.
I'm moving.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Discussion. Been done off, a vote by your hand?
Thank you, council.
Item J, um, two thousand nineteen operating budget presentation, Lisa?
Okay, I have brought you all a copy. Uh, I had emailed one to you a week ago or so. Uh, maybe one little minor change happened to it, but it's pretty much the same as what I emailed to you. If you've had a chance to review it, what I'll do is just kind of go over the variances and what, what we did uh, in this year's budget. Jim can chime in at any time, but uh, we uh, we've gone from two thousand eighteen budget of eleven thousand, seven hundred. Eleven million, seven hundred thousand up to twelve million, sixteen thousand. Um, and I'll, I'll just go over the major changes uh, with you. Uh, in the general fund, I'm, I'm, if you want to look at it with me, I'm looking at uh, the budget totals paid, which is, I think starts on page one. And I'm looking at the uh, all funds revenue. Um, in the general, for the general revenue, although our debt proceeds were down because we bought the fire truck in two thousand eighteen. We had a lot of debt proceeds, they were down three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, and fines have, have gone down about thirty-five thousand due to we're just not collecting what I had budgeted this year. But we also in the general fund budgeted for a hundred thousand dollars use of prior fund balance. And that was the only way I could get all those park improvements of, that Jim had requested in, in the park department. Um, other, other taxes are budgeted a little higher, the TAB T that would just be auto tax, Adlore. Uh, property taxes are up about eighty-four thousand, franchise taxes are up and uh, local option sales taxes up about seventy thousand. Looking at on down, uh, at the two thousand fourteen Splast account, it's down about forty, almost forty-five thousand. And uh, that's just as estimated this year. I think I had overestimated a little bit for eighteen, so that's why that's come down some. I was being conservative. Water fund revenue is up almost four hundred and thirty-three thousand. Let's see. My notes aren't very good on this. Oh, I'm, I read, I read that wrong. I'll, I'll have to get back, I, I've cut my note off here, I don't, I don't know why. It's mostly leachate though, a whole lot of it is for leachate, uh, of that money and uh.
They started as a bookstore. We didn't like their own plan. It's like finding out the best.
I'm having problems myself. You'll help? Sorry, no, I don't know what it's doing. Sorry.
Good call, Mary. Good call, Mary, right now.
I was calling Lisa, sorry. No. I was trying to help you out. Oh, no, under the governmental funds, uh, I'll go through the, the major changes there for the expenditures. Um, executive is up fifty-five thousand and that's because Jim wanted me to put fifty thousand, just an extra amount in there in each fund. For uh, salary adjustments, possible salary adjustments. Uh, moving on down. Fire department is down four hundred and nineteen thousand and that's due to in two thousand eighteen, we, we had purchased the fire truck. Um, and so we have near the expenditures there. In the police department, it's up not even, almost a hundred thousand and that's uh, mainly due to uh. Two vehicle purchases we've budgeted for. Um, street department is up a hundred and sixty-four thousand and that, we've just added a lot of employees to the street department. Which, you add employees, benefits, um, gas and oils up. That's mainly those, those expenditures. Um, fleet maintenance is down seventy, seventy-eight thousand and we lost, lost a salary there, health insurance benefits. Um, parks, parks administration is up two hundred and eighteen, four hundred and we had budgeted an additional two hundred and thirty thousand for park improvements. Enterprise funds or water fund expenditures, uh. They actually remain, actually went down a little bit this, for this year. I don't know if there's anything major to talk about there. It's mainly had to do with employees moving from department, from two other departments or leaving. I wanted to go over with you what we had, uh, budgeted for capital outlay. Um, in the general fund, I had budgeted for um, a software upgrade and the, well, this will be in the general fund and the water fund. I called our software company and we'll talk about this more and I want to get some more quotes and, uh, but they, I had talked to them at one of our conferences and they said we could upgrade for fifty thousand. We're really in the dark ages with our uh, financial uh, software right now. Police department, like I said, we budgeted for two vehicles, one detective car and a police cruiser. Um, and several other supply materials, small equipment. Uh, they, we budgeted for a watch guard counter interview room, but we're hoping that FBI is gonna reimburse that. Fire department, we budgeted fifteen thousand to repair the driveway, a new Tahoe for chief, uh, small equipment. Uh, radio and emergency equipment, five thousand, washing machine dryer, three thousand. Uh, street department, we budgeted for a zero-turn lawnmower. Um, a new cap, three fifteen track hoe. Uh, fleet department, an AC recovery unit, which we split this between general and water, but. Uh, twenty-seven fifty in each department or each, each fund. Uh, and parks, we've budgeted for, I got the Integra in next year's budget because I wasn't sure if it would be closed before year end. That's a hundred thousand. East Spring Street improvements, a hundred thousand. Development of one, of the Integra property, twenty-five thousand. Paint, prime and paint light poles at Ballfields, ten thousand. Additional park improvements, twenty-five, another seventy-five thousand. Uh, in the water fund, some of our major purchases are Indian Forest, uh, lift station, this is in sewer maintenance. A mo, a, a new motor, sixteen thousand. Bart Mountain Road lift station pump motor, eighteen thousand. And we've budgeted to clean and inspect lines, thirty thousand dollars in the sewer maintenance. Uh, water admin, of course, the software upgrade, another twenty-five thousand in there. Jim wanted me to budget to pay the city hall parking lot and I have this split between uh, general fund and water fund. It's twelve thousand, five hundred in each fund. Um, water supply, we budgeted a hundred thousand to paint the industrial boulevard north tank. Uh, and also for a well, number three building and motor, forty thousand. Number two well motor backup, fourteen thousand. Um, water distribution. Um, we've budgeted twenty-five thousand for an air compressor. we've budgeted twenty-five thousand for an air compressor, service truck, sixty thousand, dump truck, seventy thousand. Major infrastructure, budgeted water line to Grandview, the city portion will be seventy-five thousand. We're hoping we can get grant proceeds of two hundred and twenty-five thousand and finance two hundred thousand of that. And that's mainly, when I was talking earlier about the water revenue going up, it's those proceeds coming in. Valves to cut off water, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Replacing fire hydrants, twenty-five thousand. And that's pretty much the major expenditures. And I did get in the budget in the sanitation department of a new garbage truck. That's all I had to go over. If y'all got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Sanitation truck was put in in nineteen?
Twenty-ninth.
Nineteenth, okay.
The valves to cut off water, do you have preliminary locations?
They've got, there are a lot of locations they want to be looking at. It's going to have to be prioritized as we go through the project.
How many will that buy? Because I know we need a lot.
I can't sit here and say it's going to be twenty percent of what's needed or fifty percent. But it will get us a start, and we will prioritize.
The water tank at, at the forestry, it's been, been wanting to paint it for a few years now. And the one at the, which, at the school, at the cemetery, Appalachian Court, it's chalking and mildewing again. What's the plans on it, David?
They prioritized on those also, and instead of doing more work, it's worse.
We've done it twice. Maybe this be the third time.
We've worked on thirty years.
Still, still a hundred thousand dollars.
About ten years to bid on that little tank.
Think of just yesterday.
Can't pull my phone cord.
It don't look outside as bad as it does at the, at the forestry. Forestry's at least a ten-year-old tank now.
Fifteen.
Have you been here fifty, David?
Quick question.
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
On page thirty-five, the accounting software upgrade, that's with our current vendor?
Yeah, and I got, I put that in there, and I, I'm going to check around and see what's out there and what other people are using. That's, I hate to change vendors in one way because it's going to be so much easier to stay with them, but our service is really bad right now. And so we're going to check.
Current provider. Do you know who the current provider is?
Harris, TBS. And, and part of the reason our service is so bad, I think, is because we haven't upgraded. We're working off an old green screen, you know, and they're, they're just losing the people that, the support staff for that.
And, but there is a Windows version included. It's just people are more comfortable with the DOS, right?
Well, if we upgrade to that Windows version, that's the fifty thousand dollars. We're all comfortable with it. We just, I think our reporting could be so much better and.
I agree.
It's just really outdated. But we may not get around to it this next year. I tried to get it in there.
When I put it on my request, I was thinking we were talking, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars over the next three years. So Lisa's conversation with our current vendor came in at a much lower cost.
And you've done an excellent job with what you have, even though it's outdated. Is there a need for our city employees and other departments to have a software system like the Water Cruz over with Miss Charlotte? And then as far as work orders, is there a good flow or is it still paper? Or is it electronic now? Is that an area we can improve upon maybe next year?
I think it's an area that can be approved on. I think with the aggressive programs we've got on some of this other may need to be put off. But it, it, it's something certainly needs to continue to be looked at. Got just other projects that we have got priorities on.
Very minute detail, the paving of the parking lot, does that include the striping for twelve five? Or we just have a paved parking lot with no stripes?
There will be stripes.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Lisa. My answer for four. Oh, I'm sorry, I have to come right across that. Okay, David, I'll sit here all this time. I did that on purpose. No, I didn't, I actually flipped right over top of it. Watershed survey, Mr. Hall, Mr. Looney?
For the mayor's request, we loudly got another bid on doing our long-term watershed monitoring. And CCR Environmental, which is like a subcontractor through turnip seed engineers, over a three-year period, their cost is testing our streams leaving our town, metrological and metals and everything that's required to continue on our monitoring. CCR Environmental's bid was fifty thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Fox Environmental's bid was sixty-five thousand two hundred and fifty. And this can be broke down into years if we want, or it can be paid or approved for all three years. It won't be paid until the work's done.
Could council get a copy of that? Or you've only, you've only got the copy? Come up and explain that to them. We might get a vote on all three, that are spread out over the years.
This is showing you each year a breakdown of what they're doing. And there's each test, cycle goes through each year. So you can either approve the whole thing tonight, or we can just approve for 2019. On the rate stays the same. They'll maybe able to, you know, negotiate next year and get it lower. So if we just want to do the one year, we can just do the one year.
The difference in price, and you have two years that are very similar on both, and then you have one that's lesser, is that due to the work that has to be done?
Yeah, and, and I think the availability of this company, that they're more of a, you know, corporate type company, or the Fox is more of just target. We can either approve the one year or the three year.
Why don't, why don't we look at the one year, council? And, and next year we can visit, and if it goes up, we will, wonder why we didn't take it this year. But I think we may be able to negotiate with them.
Yeah, I don't see any reason we would do it to you.
So give the, give the first two-year option.
Once they get started on it, they probably find some efficiencies and be able to do it at a lower cost.
Give, give the two, the Fox and the CCR?
The CCR Environmental through subcontracting through turnip seed engineers for the year 2019 is thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty. Fox Environmental for the year 2019 is twenty-four thousand two hundred.
Let's look at this year to year, what do you think? Because I think next year we could look at, we'd be more attuned to what we're looking for.
I agree.
You entertain a motion to accept the low bid? Got a motion to approve the low bid of CCR?
For 2019.
For 2019, the price again was thirteen?
Thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty.
Okay, need a second? Any seconds up? You got a second? Is that a second, John?
Yeah.
Got a motion to set, discussion?
These are the same services equaled out between the companies?
Yes. Any other discussion? My favor, what was your hand?
Thank you, Council.
Lisa, financial report. You think that specifically other than what you've already told us?
Well, I was talking about next year, now we're going to talk about this year. In your packet, you have the October 2018 year-to-date comparison to budget report. I'm just going to mention a few things. We collected ninety-four thousand seven hundred and one dollars in local option sales tax for a total of a year of a one million thirty-seven thousand two hundred and one compared to last year, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-one. So it's up eight and a half percent. Moving over, hotel motel, we've collected sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars so far this year. Splast, we've collected seventy-three thousand six hundred and ninety-eight last month. For our total cash balance in that account is six hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars end of October. And the water fund, we're in line with, pretty much in line with, a little, a little under with revenue and expenditures. But I was just going to mention, we collected so far this year in leachate, six hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and two dollars. That's all the points I was going to make unless you have any questions.
What was last year's leachate?
Four hundred and eighty-five thousand, sixty-seven dollars.
We're up a couple hundred thousand. Any questions, Council? David, you want me to sign? Jim, you put your initial by this too, if you want to. Well, I'll go down. Got three, we'll get it back to Ben. We can pass forward, you can let them know. You go, Dave. Can't wait to see that screw. Just initial by.
I'll find, I'll find someplace.
He done that, well, you go down by yourself. Lottie's not here, I see.
Yeah, I apologize, Lottie. Lottie is out working some easements, had an opportunity to talk to three folks out in the Talking Rock project area. So I excused him from the meeting. He had, said he had nothing special to report.
Okay, Chief Lo?
Evening, Mayor, Council. We have a police report from October, responded to nine hundred and twenty-three caution nine-one-one center, on a forty, or fifty-three motor vehicle accident. Issue a total of one hundred and thirty-two citations for following, eighty-five speeding, one seatbelt, one shot, fifty-one reckless driving, one hundred and fifty motors, thirty-six miscellaneous violations, four driving on suspension or revoked license, and two professional marijuana. Georgia State Patrol is entitled sixty-eight, grand total in City Court, two hundred citations. Total of seventeen state warrants, three issued for following, one simple battery, four counts of forgery in the fourth degree, one aggravated assault, two fleeing and attempting to abuse felony, obstruction felony, two false statements, three giving false name, two theft by taking and one possession of methamphetamine felony. Miscellaneous calls are responding to, forty-three alarm, twenty-two disorderly, fourteen harassment, eight trespassing, seventy-one suspicious activity calls, eighteen domestic dispute investigated, two burglaries.
Question?
Marvelous Justin Parade went fine. The street coppers were good to go, no issue. Halloween was very crowded, as crowded as I've seen over the last twenty-two years, I guess, seventy-three degrees. So a lot of people coming to town. Auburn Hills went off the luggage as well. No vandalism, cars ag, nothing, very, very peaceful Halloween.
It went well, Navo trails went.
Great, and a number of calls compared to last year. Not that they're up, I think, but.
Chief Lo?
Mayor, Council. Fourth month of October, city's fire department responded to ninety-four murders. Those were no structure fires inside the city, two outside. Most of those were assisted by county fire department. No vehicle fired in or out, no grass fires in, one outside the city. Ten motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside, three outside of the city. Thirty-four murders with other responses in, nineteen out. Twenty-two other calls in the city, three outside. That number's up because we've had our action, fire alarms, the power pole's on fire, and you know, we've had a lot crazy stuff in the last month. At the end of the month, it was eleven hundred and thirty-two calls. Fire especially, we've got three sets of plans, and we've got fifteen special.
Question, Council? Thank you, Chief. John, you have anything about JYSI?
Restless started, so got a bunch of little ones out there, you know. Hopefully will have success as we have last year, so.
Say anything about our boys going to the state playoffs? That Jasper Youth Sports Association, ever one of them borrow a couple, play there?
They all did. I'm very proud of them. I'm very proud of working with the schools, too.
Ten no, I think, at County High School. We entertain a motion to adjourn.